All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started, I'll call the meeting to order and
one, two, three, four will be done at our regular meeting on Tuesday. Then number five.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move eleven, A and H to number four. And Steve to follow the street plan proposal to be at the beginning of the meeting agenda since we have a contract. Will Hager here to present.
Will?
We got a motion in a second.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Those, motion carries. Will, just so, man.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Um, Will Hager with KCI Technologies, um, here tonight to speak to the proposal for the pavement and sidewalk conditions assessment and pavement management system. Proposal, this is something that we've been speaking with Philip and others about for a number of weeks. It's a service that we perform for Bedford County most recently, currently working on a similar project for Dixon County. And basically, this is a way for you to widely invest the funds dedicated to pavement maintenance and sidewalk maintenance and performance. You know better than most that those are significant projects and priorities for the community. What we're hoping to do is provide some value by giving you some more defined direction on how to approach those needs. So I have a quick few slides. It's basically provided in the proposal if you've got it with you, but we can look at that together if you'd like.
We don't have a proposal.
No. Okay.
Okay, cool.
So we can. We can look at this together quickly if you'd like. There we go.
That's within the packet.
Yeah, so this is the actual proposal, and I've got some slides here that just kind of summarize what that'll look like. Maybe, maybe. Okay. So a little bit about KCI, um, we've been fortunate enough to work with you for several years, personally. We're close to a little over twenty-two hundred employee owners now. We have a variety of services across the eastern portion of the country and Texas now, including planning, landscape architecture, and asset management folks. Asset management folks are who will primarily be working on this project. So when we do these pavement management projects, we acquire data through a variety of sources, we'll work with the city, uh, who has the list of inventory and latest pavement schedules and pavement budgets. But in, for this project specifically, we're going to contract with a partner who has a LiDAR truck, and they'll actually drive every city-owned and maintained road in the community. And that LiDAR will pick up on every deflection and defect in the pavement to accurately categorize and classify the, uh, current conditions of the pavement. They'll do the same thing for sidewalks. So what that will lead us to is. This is just our overall process. Kick off and coordination with your public works team and staff, review of the records. The third bubble is the LiDAR truck, which will scan every road, leading to a baseline set of conditions for the community. We'll look at those and categorize them based on a national adopted standard. And that will lead us to a set of recommendations for budgeting and also, um, actual funding of those projects going forward. And that's what this will lead to. So this PCI value, you see like an image of some pavement, identified cracks. That PCI value is basically how good is your pavement currently? So the higher the number, the better. When you start getting around fifty-five and below, that's when you have to really, uh, do something pretty soon. And what I've found recently, this is a service that we provided in the mid-Atlantic for years, but communities in Tennessee are really grabbing onto this because this helps you decide how to spend those funds, and it helps your staff communicate the need to elected officials when you're juggling many priorities for the community. And this, this is another graph that illustrates the need. When things get critical around that fifty-five rating, um, you're gonna see a precipitated decline in the quality of that payment, and then you're, before you know it, if you don't act soon enough, you'll have some real failures and which will lead to reconstruction instead of maintenance. That's what we're up to avoid. So we'll do something similar for sidewalks, we'll have a different set of ratings, um, where we're really just trying to identify the areas that are good, where we might need some localized, just spot repairs, or we may have some areas where full reconstruction is required. And that's probably most likely where you have really severe uneven surfaces or thinner than expected concrete sections or some washouts. Once we gather all that data, uh, we work with the budgets and funding mechanisms available, we'll create a series of graphs, and these are what is intended to help your decision-making too. So the graph on the left is, uh, predicted PCI over time. So across the bottom, you'll see, starting in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-six, about a five-year period. What do we expect the conditions to be as time moves along if you're funding it at different levels? So every colored line represents a different level of funding. So, uh, that blue line at the top, um, is kind of Pollyanna-ish, that's, you're eliminating all your backlogs, every concern you've got, and it's a higher number. So logically, the less you spend, the more issues you will continue to have, but, um, you're continuing to make progress year over year. And there's no judgment on this, this is just for your information on what level to spend. This is an example, your numbers will be different, the, um, timeframes will be different, but the trends in these lines will be similar. Turn on the right is, um, looking at that remaining backlog, what can you expect over time and, uh, what unfunded millions of dollars, um, are remaining as you move through time? So, uh, that red line is the do-nothing approach, so you're gonna have plenty of money left over the years, but, um, you're not making any progress on your backlog either, that's going up as well. And again, it's kind of the inverse, that blue line, you're taking care of your backlog almost immediately, uh, but you're depleting your budget as well. So, um, I know this is a lot of information at once, uh, if you would like to look at the proposal, we're, I'm happy to do that, or if you have any specific questions about the project in general, happy to answer.
You said we'd have that tomorrow, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Mike?
Cost is?
One-hundred-and-sixteen, one-sixteen, one-hundred.
Yeah, that's one, one of my questions.
And the proposal is the contract, basically, that outlines, uh, these images aren't in that?
No, well, they are included in that, but, uh, with the rest of the contractual arrangements, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Mike, you know. Go ahead, pump.
Okay. Make sure I understand, you said a sidewalk? What if we need sidewalks somewhere? Would y'all do, would that be included in the proposal or only the sidewalk that exists now?
The primary scope is to identify your existing sidewalks and rate their conditions. Now, obviously, we can identify gaps as well, um, as part of that. But this is really intended to be a conditions assessment to kind of help you fund and manage your program that you currently have.
Okay. Mike?
Another question I had, Will, I guess when y'all, which is probably a pretty good thing that we do this, I mean, that way it's not, I guess, people of the city making a decision which street needs to be paved, it'd be coming from somebody that knows what they're doing.
Yeah.
But like on, uh, I guess some of our county streets, you know, we have no stormwater. So, I mean, in our city streets, most, some of those are, are, uh, curb. But like, if, if y'all go out and you're going down the road and you're evaluating, and you look and you say, hey, this, something's gotta be done with, with this ditch, you know, this drainage right here. Do y'all, will y'all do that, or is that something just totally, totally different? I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I guess when you, if you go out and you do pave those streets, what is that gonna do with the?
Drainage.
Right, with the runoff?
Okay, I see what you're saying. Really, the intent of this proposal is to focus on those conditions and that assessment. Now, working with your city staff and support of the planning commission, I'm aware of some other stormwater models that are underway and probably close to being delivered, that's probably a better group to coordinate with for that. We would love to do it for you, but I believe CEC has that history, that local knowledge a bit better. We're expecting those repairs to not expand the footprint of the road, so there shouldn't really be any impact to stormwaters that would be significant. But I, I think I understand.
But I, I guess what I'm, my main concern, you know, from a couple of our city and county roads, I don't understand it, because there's more county people running on our city streets than city people. But I guess one thing that, I guess, if, if you paved it, then after you paved it and you have a big hard rain and, and you have big water standard on the pavement, you know, is that gonna present a safety issue?
I think I understand the question, are you anticipating some areas have been impacted by standing water and that's?
No area.
Deteriorating the pavement quality?
Yeah.
We may be able to identify those, uh, causes.
Well, if you can, I mean, I, I mean, me, I'd appreciate it, you know, if you could.
We'll definitely keep.
I mean, if it cost a little bit more, I'd be, you know.
We can, we can definitely look at that. Uh, one thing we can commit to now is just to mark in our notes any observations of contributing factors to the condition of the pavement. Sometimes those can be environmental, sometimes they can be, you know, uh, an area where, uh, a trucking company might be coming out on the road and it's not enforced enough for that type of vehicle. Um, so we can try to be aware of those issues too, as we identify.
Willie?
Well, Philip, or, I guess I just want to make sure I understand, you're like, um, glass street, I moved our pavement out when we paved it and we had to go patch it. Well, GCI, whoever that is, would that be fixed before we paved?
And kind of to build off what Will's saying, he's gonna look at current conditions of the street from there. When we go to bid it out, and he'll probably have a recommendation, because they're planning someone, there're gonna be standards. Can we go to those standards, or we gotta stay existing?
Yeah.
If we stay existing, just cause of limitations, and then it's really not in our scope, but before we bid that out, we would probably work with CEC, like, what are, were the original additions meant to be in this drainage? In those areas you're talking about. So it depends on, I guess, your evaluation. If we're gonna reconstruct that street, well, that's probably already in there, but if we're gonna go current street and conditions and pave it, and then look at it from a standpoint, what was the drainage meant to be back then?
But a lot of them street don't have stormwater drainage.
Well, you would want to share the CEC information with KCI, whatever it is they pay.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, the biggest thing I liked about the, um, proposal and what I've seen in other communities that they've done is, I've, I've said it before, they're raking every bit of our streets, our city streets, from worst to best, probable cost to repay that, and then, uh, stopgaps if you don't do anything. And that gives us, and me and Shepherd are already working on a plan for you guys this fiscal year to start next fiscal year, because they'll be doing this, get the ground running next July, uh, but we'll have to evaluate that, what can we afford? We mentioned skipovers, for example, Halon, we know that's a big cost, but there may be four, five, six, eight projects that we know that we can bid out. And I think the things you're talking about with the stormwater or some of those areas.
Yeah, like the, wash the pavement away.
We have to look at it.
Yeah.
And that goes into total costs.
Okay.
I think this is a good roadmap, roadmap for us to be able to allocate.
Okay.
To get to what you guys, and I want to do it too, pave our streets.
Yeah. Any other questions for Will? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike? You're up, brother.
Hey, how are you?
Doing great. How you doing?
Great.
I just wanted to come back and, uh, say just a couple of things, let me get to sit you back.
Hello, thank you.
When I made the presentation at the city council meeting, uh, we had some time constraints, which is fine, and I understand that.
You got extra minutes, if I have to remember.
Yeah, but. But there was a couple of things that I'd like to say too. And you, you got your information, and you've heard about this before, I take it first. You read the information in the packet that you got? Okay, okay. You know what, there's four, there's four of us in the company, and you say, why would poor guys at our stage in life want to do this? And that's a real good question, but there's seventy-eight years of emergency medical service in our country. And as I told you all about, the story of Jonathan Harrison going out and response time delayed by eight minutes, and a child died while his mother was doing CPR on him. That, that's a motivational factor to try to get this light out and get it in people's hands. It's, as far as, um, we're not looking at asking you all to make everybody do this. No, we're not. That's not the purpose. The main issues right now are high-density housing and new construction. And new construction, the main thing on new construction is Google Earth updates its maps every six to nine months. And you can ask, uh, the chief over here and see, manage, that's a big deal. When you go into an area of high-density housing, uh, I think you can tell something that you ran into the other day, um, about a response time. So, high-density housing is a, is a big deal, and it's where response times are increased dramatically. And new construction, and that's why those two things are the, the point of emphasis for us to get it out there. We are working on grants to try to get it to folks who have health issues. We'll be working through South Central Human, um, the Healthcare Agency. And we'll be working with them to do that, and we're working with the state on trying to get those grants. But we wanted to start here in Mount Pleasant, um, and we, we will be going to Columbia, and we will be going to Murray County, and there's interest in Williamson County and Rutherford County, so we'll be going to those counties, but we wanted our city lit up first. And I just wanted to come back to the study session and see if y'all had any questions that, anything that y'all thought of and wanted to ask.
Corey, have you got any? Because you were out.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, can I have a packet?
Sure.
So I drafted an ordinance, um, the purpose of the ordinance is to require the locator nine-one-one to be installed at high-density and multifamily residential construction with new residential addresses. Stated that the locator nine-one-one is a smart LED light bulb that is used to replace existing front porch light bulbs, um, for the light that's most visible from the road and is connected to an app. When nine-one-one is called, the app takes over the bulb and converts it to a strobing beacon that changes color from red to blue to white and identifies the exact location that nine-one-one was called from. And stated, if the city believes that this is necessary to enhance the safety of its citizens, the city can require the installation of the locator nine-one-one using its police power given to it under the charter. The resolution would update Title VII of the Municipal Code, which is the, the fire section.
There's a, a little bit, there's two different types of bulbs.
Okay.
One is the locator nine-one-one bulb that you described, the other is a FOB operated, and it doesn't have to have the router, and it doesn't have to have the smartphone. And we have that in a lot of, lot of places.
Okay.
So there's two different types of bulbs, and there's two more patent pending.
Is that in this?
If not, I'll give it to you. So, but it, it's called the Freedom bulb, the locator Freedom bulb is what it is, and it works with. So it's a lot less complicated, because when we made the nine-one-one bulb, we realized that a lot of the, the folks that we were trying to reach, which is older demographic folks, they don't have a router. They, a lot of them don't have a smartphone. And a whole lot of them, my age and up, don't like messing with apps. So therefore, it was, we needed to get something else where we could reach out to those people. And this is simple, it's just a little FOB with a white button and a red button. You can operate that light with pushing the white button, and it's white, red button, and it activates, so.
Can you?
Change some language.
Yeah, probably, so, as far as their proposal for high-density and multifamily, it would be the FOB, not the?
Could be either one. But you want to vote, I'm answering to, to them.
Okay.
New construction.
Thank you. Because I knew you weren't here when you did it last time, Mike.
Maybe I'm mis, misunderstood, but when you said nine-one-one, nine-one-one can't activate the light though, right? Okay. Okay. It's the homeowner.
The homeowner, the light itself.
When you call with, okay, I was, I didn't have the packet yet, so I was going off the website, so I was trying to, to.
So you're, you're asking for new construction going forward?
New high-density and multifamily only. So if just a regular single-family house by itself would not, uh, be required to have.
That would be in the construction.
Yeah.
If it was a high, if it was in a high-density or multifamily area. And so I think that's a part that we've talked about having to define somehow, um, in the ordinance, if, if they pass it.
Chris may can speak a little more, but are we talking about R-three, basically, high-density? R-one, R-two wouldn't really be considered. Thank you.
If you're R-three density, high-density, you can have single-family, multifamily, apartments, townhomes. So, highly condensed, um, so if you have condos, and they happen to have this emergency locator bulb at their unit, it could be spotted real quick, because once you go down a row of, of, like a second floor, or third floor, all you see are doors only right and left, and you're having to look for the door number, and if they had the light outside that unit, it could be spotted easily. Even if it were just the building, uh, buildings typically have alphabets for them, uh, A, one-on-one, and then you go one-on-two for the second. Saying all that, the houses are ten feet apart, typically five feet on each side for a single-family. Townhomes, you have zero-foot lot lines, you just have a row of, of townhomes. Trying to find the address on that can be challenging sometimes.
So is R-three the right zoning designation, or is R-two included in that too?
I would include R-one and R-two.
Oh, okay, so.
Well, I guess you could explain R-one and R-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
R-one's not multifamily or?
It's not, no, I mean, if you wanted to stay with just multifamily, it would just be strictly R-three zoning at that time, you wouldn't include R-one or R-two. R-one is low-density, you'll have a ninety-foot lot. In R-two, you have a fifty-foot lot, and we have. Technically, you probably could see those houses and identify them quicker, but the R-three is high-density, and it has a multitude of, of, uh, houses, it can be apartments, condos, it can be constructed in that.
So you could have a single-family in an R-three?
You can have, absolutely, but that's where the lot.
Got to be fifty feet or?
Yes, so you, you have small lots.
Mike?
I, I guess to make it more simple, to me, if we do it with a single-family home starting out, it'd be a, be a whole lot, whole lot better just to put it, you know, for new homes going up, this here will be mandatory to have these nine-one-one, you know, the lights. It just seemed like to me it would just be so much better, and, and I can't see where that would put a, at a real big expense, you know, to, to a home, and let's just say somebody put up a new home over here on Mockingbird, let's say, we don't do it. Let's say they have an emergency, where they have trouble finding. So that's why I'm saying, we need to just do it from day one, you know, for all new construction, you know, to have these lights. It will pay off. And it's not gonna cost the homeowner that much money, I wouldn't think. At least, that's the way I would like to see it. I just think, you know, it'd just be better for every citizen.
Right, and I would like rather sooner than later to see it offered to the other residents if they wanted it, especially the elderly, because I know, you know, everybody's been arguing with me about it, but nine-one-one address and physical addresses are different in Mount Pleasant. Because we got one road sign, and then nine-one-one said a street's not named that, and I know from experience, I live on Adams, I called nine-one-one because my husband was not right, he had a brain arrhythmia rupture. Before they got there, and I waited five minutes, no sirens or nothing. When they got to my house, I was at Murray Regional Hospital, if I had a wage on them, he would have been dead. So I'm saying, I feel like it's a plus to offer it to all residents. Well, they could go bad at Ace, I think, if they wanted now.
We're gonna go to Ace Hardware, to the public kind of Ace. But I, I know what you're saying right there, because I was rolling the trash can around, I was rolling the trash can around in front of Adam, I heard sire, and I thought, okay, so we'll see what's going on. It was animals, turned up Adams. That's good, because they'll be able to find them real quick. So, I hit my phone just to see how long it would take. The numbers on Adams are terrible.
Yes, absolutely, I live there.
They're back at the house where they're not visible, and it was twelve minutes till they found the house after they turned on the lights. Now, I don't know who it was, and I don't, I'm not sure of the situation, so, but they will be available at Ace Hardware, we've already talked to Jay, and he said.
And the main thing, I mean, even with them being at Ace Hardware, it's letting the public know that they are, right?
We will be working to make everybody aware of that.
Okay.
We will.
Thank you.
The other thing, you know, I wanted to bring out, I guess, you know, with these lights, I mean, it may not be that, well, it could be an emergency even at this, like if somebody's trying to break into your house, you know, you can stroll that light, and, you know, you might have saved somebody from entering your house.
Scare.
Scare them off.
I promise you it will. Because they know somebody's fixing to come.
They don't know what that light is.
And also, it's, uh, it's protection for these police officers back here. You, uh, you go to that house, and it's a police call, and the light's going off, you know you're going in the right house, and as fast as they're going, and I'm having, my bird alarm went up at the house, and it was just some young new officers that responded at, even after I called the alarm company and said, don't come, we're fine, our old house, it's cold night, and the glass pops, and the glass breaks, sensor went off. They said, we've already responded, police. And the police stopped at the corner of Bond Street and Pleasant Street and went down each house to get to my house. I didn't turn my locator on, because I didn't have the emergency, but I was thinking, you know, if we had had a problem, that's an extra five or six minutes, and, uh, that's exactly what you're saying there.
Corey, you're gonna work on this and have it available for the package, right?
Yes, so I think from what I'm hearing tonight, I need to change it to, um, all-new residential construction with new residential addresses, that seems to be what y'all want to see. So I will.
I mean, that's what I'd like to see, I don't know what, you know.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, um, and I might need a little more information about the loc.
Anything you need.
The bulb, or the, do you have a contact? Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
All right, we'll start moving on down the agendas, uh, five ace wearing, and then you police officer Matthew Chris.
Good thing you will.
Nice young man. We may have the, I'm not sure yet, I would like to do a proclamation for Hamilton Place, they're hosting the poke ball Saturday night, it's in Mount Pleasant. And, uh, I've talked to Kelly, and they're trying to get me some information, and I've given Teresa a heads up on it.
Next Tuesday.
No, it's just Saturday. So, um, I've been waiting since Monday to try to get the info, so hopefully, maybe I'll have it tomorrow. They're putting it up right now, and I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be a mess. Beer board, we'd like to, um, Michael gave me the name of Jay Smith to replace the, uh, member that was on there, and then on the Housing Authority, it will be Lance Boyd, which currently serves, and his term is expiring, and Rodney Massey staying there. And then possibly by Tuesday, we will have the, the third, which will be the resident that's required by the bylaws, which would be Carolyn Bennett. And then on the Mount Pleasant Recreation Committee is, um, Anna Arnold, I met her at the, uh, jamboree, very nice young lady, and, uh, got, got an interest in it because of her children, so. So. Uh, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten A will hear Tuesday, ten B will hear Tuesday, ten C. Philip, you wanted to say a word or two on that one, didn't you?
I can, it'll be in your packets. Um, this is a gas contract, we uh, from our pipeline, not secondary. Every five years, we have to renew them. Um, what I've learned about it is not a lot, but it's grandfathered in from nineteen ninety three. And if we don't renew them, um, it costs us a lot more money. But you'll have the contracts, there's three of them. You can call me, I've got a few notes on it, but um, my knowledge is pretty limited on that. But I did talk to Zach about it and he tried to guide me through it. He says, you want to renew these.
Every five years, correct?
Every five years.
I found in the minutes where we did it in two thousand nineteen and basically you can't use our line if you don't.
If you don't.
You can, but you gotta pay a lot more because you're grandfathered in ninety three.
Yeah.
And it's automatic renewal, so technically I think the city could just keep doing it, but they ask us to fill out some paper to renew it.
Everybody else takes advantage, we might as well.
Philip, anything else you want to add to it?
No, sir, that's all I have on my.
Any question for him? Eleven B on ordinance regarding Magnolia Drive and this dates back to nineteen eighty nine.
All right, I think that one's on me. So um, Brightland Homes, the developer of cottages of Bearwood, has purchased property that between Magnolia Drive, Cannon Road, and I think forty three?
Two forty three.
Yeah, two forty.
Two forty three, I don't know. Um, North Main Street, okay. Um, during their purchase of that property, they discovered that Magnolia Drive is included in the legal description for that property. Um, I've talked to the surveyor about that. It looks like, doesn't, it looks like a mistake, honestly, doesn't make sense. Um, but they don't want to own Magnolia Drive. The city believes that we own Magnolia Drive. We built it. We found uh, minutes from the Industrial Development Board from the nineteen eighty nine, I think,
Yes, yes.
where um, the city noted in its minutes that we were gonna build that road as part of the incentive package for the glass plant. We found a bid advertisement to where we bet out the pavement of this road. Um, we've found different, different parts of the minutes, but what we have not found is a right of way description, transferring that property from the owner at that time to the city of Mount Pleasant. So we had maintained the road, we have, from all that we can tell, we built the road. Uh, we believe it's city property, but Brightland Home is asking us to officially accept it. Um, and so that is the purpose of the ordinance that would be in front of you. Um, it would be to accept that portion of Magnolia Drive.
You know, this gets passed, we also put on the planning commission for next one.
Right, because it, because it involves a city street, which changes the zoning map because the street map is part of the zoning map. This would have to go before the planning commission and be recommended back to you. But because of the, honestly, because of the proposed uh, construction on that property, they've asked us to do it sooner rather than later. This is something that y'all are interested in. So we'll present this to you on Tuesday. If it passes and it's gonna move forward, then it will go to planning commission in October and then back to you for a second reading and a public hearing in October as well. Yes, sir.
Mike.
Uh, I guess, Chris, so the city owns the street. So if they come in and they damage the street, does that mean that the city has to replace their tear up?
So that's, that's the, we're saying we own the street, we're gonna officially accept it, even though it's not included in the legal description. So yes, we would accept the ongoing maintenance, we would accept the street as is. So we assume it was built according to the subdivision regs that were in place in nineteen eighty nine, which is the same subdivision regs that we have right now. Um, we have not gone out and done boring tests or anything like that to verify what the road's made of or anything like that. So you would be accepting it as is and you would be accepting ongoing maintenance. So if them or anybody else uh, caused damage to the road, then it would be ours. Yeah. Um, is that different than the way it would be right now? I don't know.
Probably not.
And so that's kind of where we are coming from, you know.
I did check, see people come in and tear up the street and, you know.
Right. Yeah, and you know, that's, if you don't want to do this, we could leave it as is and see what happens, you know. Um, but.
That's dangerous.
Yeah, we we spent a lot of hours putting in time and finding this. Um, I think Corey's right, we can prove it's ours, we can prove we built it. But what we can't prove is it was recorded correctly. Um, and they technically, I don't know if we can weigh in, but they can shut it down. You know, it becomes a legal issue, right? But technically, they could shut it down, they said they probably would.
We're about to close the bridge.
So for all intents and purposes, this is a cleanup measure. But you're right, Mr. Davis, like you would be accepting ongoing responsibility and liability for this road. Um, but, you know, do I think you probably already have that responsibility? Yes. But.
We've already done it.
We would be officially formally doing it.
It wouldn't be like a bunch of construction, you know, trucks and stuff going over and possibly tearing it up, you know, that's something.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Oh, Miss Tucker.
Just one comment. I found in all the backtracking, trying to find it, possibly James Webb may have surveyed this back in eighty nine. I did see that in one of the filings. So what I'll do is call uh, Gerald Vig, because that's where his, he, and see if he has it on file.
Is he, he's at uh, West Engineering?
Yeah.
Because I talked to Mr. O'Leary today about the survey. So this is how this process has gone for the past month, just so you know. We are constantly finding little pieces to this puzzle, but um, I, good, let me know what what you find.
I know, Alan, and uh, so I'll ask that question tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, ordinance, it'll be ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven twenty eight. And this is change the zoning on a piece of property located on North Main Street from highway commercial to light industrial. Anybody want to speak to that? Mickey is here to speak for the folks that would be purchasing the property. Anybody's got any questions?
It did pass.
It did pass in the planning commission Tuesday night.
Um.
So it'd probably be a win-win as far as I'm concerned because.
Well, right now, we're not getting any taxes off of it hardly.
I'm just saying it'll be paid on top of that. So it, you know, it's a win, I guess it will be, I mean, I don't know that, but I'd say it's a win-win for the city.
And you'll have in your packet, the planning commission's worksheet that they use to say the reasons why this should be rezoned or recommended, the rezone to light industrial. So.
And they did a good job of that last night in that meeting of listing why they recommended it. Very good job. All right. Shifra D E are all the same. You want to explain those two for us?
Every um, every time we do any kind of a bond closing, we will always have two resolutions. Uh, one is called the initial resolution, just approving us to do a borrowing. And the second one is actually authorizing the bond. Um, this is for the VAC truck. We already received the VAC truck. I think everybody's probably received pictures of it. The utility department has been using it, Public Works has been using it. Um, but USDA funding was four hundred and fifty five thousand dollar bond, fifty five, fifty thousand grant. Um, once we do this closing, we'll be able to uh, go ahead and make the payment and stuff for it. So it's just, we already approved it, the resolution, but because to close on the bond, we have to do these resolutions.
Right. Any questions? Uh, then we got resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty to twenty twenty five tap grant. And this is for the continuation of the downtown revitalization. It would take us from the grill to Bond and Bluegrass to the courthouse over a five to eight year period, Philip.
And that's true too, right?
Yeah, so this is um, applying only, so uh, you may get it, may not, you still have to approve that. So the thought process was, it's exactly right, I'll carry it on down to Bond, uh, down Bond, back up Blacks, to City Hall. And that's a phase. But if we're looking at a five to eight year period, um, not getting any younger, why not add another phase? Because it gives us time from a five to eight years to really find that twenty percent match and make sure. So go ahead and do the next phase from uh, Bluegrass down to the courthouse. Um, again, it's just to apply for it and then we can go from there.
It's always been the intent when we got the tap grant, it would be the phase one and we'd have several other phases. And the one thing that Philip and I learned in talking with the state is they used to want to fund a lot of small projects. And now they've changed it where they'd rather have less large projects. So adding more to it, making a bigger project would actually benefit our application from the feedback we got from the state.
And I think another thing, I hate to get through all the phases and then turn around and start over.
Yeah.
On those decades.
Exactly. And the public hearing for this is the twenty fourth.
Yes.
Um, of this month at noon, twelve o'clock here.
Here.
Is the public hearing.
Any questions? Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty one, authorizing the city to participate in public empty partner, safety partners matching grant program. And this is for boots, correct?
You told me.
Yep. Any questions? Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty three, a resolution to accept the ownership and maintenance of a sewer line improvements at low at fourteen twenty seven North Main Street. And this is the, where we required landmark to increase the size of the sewer line going up through there. Wasn't it a thirty foot? Um, didn't we wind up requiring them to do thirty feet?
I think it was more, but I don't know the details, but it.
Yeah.
Um, but basically this was the expansion. We've been waiting on to that approval. So uh, getting rid of the line that they took out of service and adding this back into our system.
Yeah, that was twelve hundred feet that had to be replaced for what like kind, actually. Uh, we were able to get them to extend the sewer easement all the way across the front of the property for future use. So that was a plus for the city. Uh, this line actually is not being used, uh, meaning it, it just runs in front of the plant. Uh, it drop grade goes from north to south. So technically, there's not anything from understanding hooked up to this line from the point that where they had extended it to its termination.
Future expansion of the city.
Future expansion of this going to the north.
Yep.
Okay.
And we went ahead and got them to do it so we didn't have to.
Well, they had done it the first time, so that was part of the original deal, is that they built twelve hundred feet.
Twelve hundred and sixty.
And so when they decommissioned that part, we asked for them to build the same amount. Uh, going, going or on the front of the property. Um, we have as built.
We have as built.
And we have a bond in place. So we're accepting the ownership of it and the maintenance of it once the bond is over.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. That's right.
Any questions? Well, tax write-off, we'll see Tuesday night.
Yep, twenty thirteen, um, whenever we close the fiscal year, I'll have to write off as part of the audit, the tenth year that we, by TCA, governments can only uh, collect up to ten years on old taxes.
Okay, any questions? We'll have that Tuesday night.
Yeah.
A request for a quote on a twenty twenty four IPG planning grant for zone meters and sewer flow. And that's for the engineering, correct, Philip?
Yeah, that, well, we send out qualifications and we um, it's, so the grant is twofold. It's uh, for wastewater, which we will recommend large. And then uh, for the meters, the zone meters, we're recommending uh, CC Ricky Oakley.
Yep. Any questions? STDBG allocate twenty twenty four funds funding for over five thousand people, street and engineering on streets this year. Philip?
So I'm gonna let Shifra take that one.
I think for the past three or four years, once the city passed a five thousand population mark, the state gave a block grant to the city. The first year, they just sent the funds over. Um, and now we've had to allocate them every year. So every year around this time, we go through this process of, we don't know the amount of the grant yet, how much we're going to get, but we will get something. So twenty twenty three amount was a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. We allocated that towards the downtown project. The twenty twenty four funds, we're gonna go ahead and allocate that towards the downtown project as well. And then starting the year after in twenty twenty five, the plan is to start allocating these funds towards um, the tap phase two.
Okay.
But we have to use them for specific things and somehow the tap grant, we can only use this for like federal and state type projects that they approve. So we can't use it on stuff that's already funded with city funds or taxpayer dollars, like property taxes. So we can only use it for specific things. So this seems to be the best use of the funds at that point instead of losing them.
Any questions? No comments from citizens. Mickey, you got anything you want to say?
I was there.
Any of the board or staff got anything they'd like to add?
I'm coming, I think.
That we think. We think. Not much. Not much. I remember the jamboree, we got a good, we finally left and we.